Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting. It is a meeting to discuss the budget for the 2020-2021 school year. Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Fury, you'd like to begin with your presentation?
Sure. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Chair. We are here today to discuss our fiscal year '21 budget. As you know, we're a little bit, our timeframe is a little bit different because of the COVID-19's impact on the legislative body and their decision-making when it comes to funding our school system. And so, this is the, our budget review, and we'll approve the tentative budget on July the 21st, and then we'll have time for us to make any adjustments or recommendations between then and our approval in August. And so, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Financial Manager, Ms. Erica Robinson, to walk us through today's budget presentation.
Good afternoon. While the screen is getting ready, I do want to let you know that the presentation is in your notebook. So if you want to look in your notebook versus looking on the screen, you can do that. All right, so I will go ahead and begin the presentation. This is our presentation for the fiscal '21 budget. So when we started this budget process, we predicted that there would likely be a funding cut. We just did not know at that time how much it would be. So we began to look at where we were in terms of our FY '20 budget to try to identify some savings that we might have due to the school closure. And so what you see here is a summary of the savings that we identified from FY '20. Due to the schools being closed, there were many expenditures that we did not incur, so we were able to have these savings. We also looked at our revenue for FY '20 and compared it to what we had budgeted and reviewed where we were at that time to project any revenues that may exceed the budget. So this slide shows the number that we were able to come to by reviewing our FY '20 budget. Okay, so now we'll begin to look at what makes up our FY '21 budget. And we will start with our QBE revenue, which is our funding from the state. Initially, we were told that our funding would be cut by 14%. So you see here on this slide, we have, we do have a reduction in our funding for FY '21. The amount is $12.7 million, which equates to 10%. So it's a little bit less of a cut than what we initially were told we were going to experience, but it is, it is still a cut of 10% from fiscal year '20.
And before you move on, just a point of clarification. We, the second line on this slide is called your QBE local fare share, and that is your community's tax digest and the five mils that are levied against your tax digest. And as your tax digest goes up, your contribution goes up, which is why you see the increase from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21 in terms of the local five mil share. So that's what that represents. And then equalization is the funds that were allocated to systems during the period of the recession that were impacted the hardest by the economic downturn in 2008. And those funds have still been allocated and were spared at the legislatures after their review of all of the cuts that were going to have to take place. You will see that they left the equalization alone, which is very helpful to us. Otherwise, our budget would have been missing dollars from equalization. So equalization really is important to the Newton County school system when it comes to preparing and funding its budget. If they were to take that away, your budget would be less $21.2 million.
Are we going to ask questions as we go through? Or we wait to the end, or?
If you, I think if you have a question, you-
Either way, yeah.
Just help me with the QB amended formula adjustment. What is, what is that?
That, that is our, that's where they placed our cut, and that's just what they call it. So the 10% cut that we received, they had to put it in this line item instead of taking it directly out of the state, the state QBE earnings number and directly out of the local fare share number directly. They created a line specifically for that.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to look at our tax digest. This is a, this is for the last 13 years. And usually when we do this presentation, we're looking at estimated numbers. But this year, because we are a little bit later in doing this, we do have the actual tax digest number for '21, for fiscal year '21. Down at the bottom, you'll see that is $3 billion, over $3 billion for the tax digest. That is an increase in the digest from the prior year of about 7%. Also, it is an increase in the gross tax revenue of the same amount of about 7%. But one thing we do have to remember when you're looking at this gross tax number, it doesn't take into account the collection fees that we have to pay as well as we have to estimate for delinquent taxes or uncollectibles. And so that, that number, that $60 million number, will, that's not the number that we're actually going to receive. It will be less by about $3.2 million.
Okay, before you move forward, I think it may be good for you to just clarify because if anybody's viewing, they're not seeing the same thing that we're seeing.
Yeah, they are. They are.
They, they are? Okay. I didn't know if that was up on the screen or not.
Yeah, it's up on the screen.
Okay, you're watching it? Okay. Because I just wanted you to state that like the mileage, that even though it's an increase, that mileage rate was still the same.
Yes, we are not proposing to change the mileage rate from the prior year. So we are going to propose to leave that mileage rate the same, which is 19.788. So those are what makes up our major funding sources. So now we'll move on to our expenditures and how that looks for this year's budget. This slide right here shows you the budgeted expenditures by category. And so it's broken out by salary and benefits, textbooks and supplies, utilities and fuel, repairs and maintenance, computers and equipment, and then other expenditures. And so the majority of our expenditures in our budget are dedicated to salaries and benefits. The next, the next largest would be utilities and fuel, and then followed by textbooks and supplies, which are all items, all categories that the school system needs to operate. On our next slide, we have our salaries and benefits by function. So on the previous slide, you had all of your, you saw all of the expenditures by category. On this slide, we're looking specifically at salaries and benefits. And so what this slide will tell you is that the majority of the salary and benefits are charged to instruction, which is where our teachers are char, where our teachers are charged, our parapods are charged there as well. So the majority of the salary and benefits goes to teachers and pairs, followed by our school administration, which is our principals and our APs and our school clerks and bookkeepers, and then followed by our counselors and social workers and psychologists and nurses. So all of those individuals, all those groups of people are school-level people, and they make up 83% of this, of this salary and benefits, together with the largest portion being 70.41% for teachers and pairs. On the next slide, we'll just take a look at our expenditures from fiscal year '19. We always like to look at where we are in comparison to the entire state by function code. And so what we see on this slide, in the instruction category, we are spending a little bit more than the state overall in, towards instruction, which is a good thing. We also are in line with the rest of the state on the other categories such as transportation or school administration or pupil services. There's nothing that is just completely out of the way on this chart. Here we show our per pupil expenditures, and we have a list of districts here that we compare ourselves to based on surrounding counties or if they are similar to us in FTE size. That is how we choose the districts that we compare ourselves to. Newton is at the top of this list, just for ease, for you to be able to see it. But if it were to be put in its correct place, it would be just under Jasper and before Walton County. So third from the bottom in our per pupil expenditures at just over $10,000 per pupil. On this slide, I just wanted to kind of point out some of the things that are in the budget that support the school reopening, some of the expenditures that we have in there that we either had to add or that we had to increase in order to proceed forward with reopening our schools. And so if you see under curriculum and instruction, we had to add an online learning platform. We also added extended day supplements to support our self-paced program, self-paced virtual program. We increased our funding that is budgeted for substitutes in the, in the case that we may need more substitutes than we've normally had in the past. We also increased our funding for professional learning. Under climate, culture, I'm sorry, culture, climate, and communication, we have added the social emotional learning software, and we also are adding technology devices, which includes hotspots, device cases, and insurance. That, those funds will be, or those technology devices will be purchased with CARE, the CARES funds, which is federal funding that we received in response to the pandemic. Under operations, we are adding an online registration component, and we are also have budgeted for overtime pay for in-house disinfection services for our facilities and our buses. We have added funding for PPE, which is personal protective equipment. And we also have budgeted for increased air filtration. And the last thing there is contracted disinfection services, which will be covered by the CARES funds.
Can I interrupt you for a question here? Would the cost of these items due to reopening be identified separately so that they can readily be viewed? Or would they be integrated in all the functions and you can't find them?
Most of them are separate, and you can, I can identify them for you in the budget. There may be one or two that are grouped together, but I can identify, if they're grouped together, I can send that information to you after this meeting.
Well, I'm trying to simplify it. I don't want to cause any additional work. But can you just place it, online learning platform, ask to make a sheet just like you've got here, and identify that cost and attach it to that edit?
Okay.
Thank you.
So lastly, I know normally we usually have four or five charts because we have different options that we want to consider. But this year, we only have one because we're trying to remain conservative with our budget. And due to the uncertainty of, you know, where the pandemic is headed and how that might affect the economy, we only have one chart this year. And so as you can see, the budget is summarized for fiscal year 2021, which is the budget that is attached in this notebook. And then we project it out for the next two years very conservatively. But even in the final year there, 2023, we are projecting a negative balance there. So we're going to have to, you know, closely monitor our budget and make sure that we are remaining conservative in that if adjustments are needed, that we make them as soon as we, as we can. And so that concludes the presentation portion. And so now we can move into taking any questions that you may have about the presentation or any questions that you may have about the budget itself, the line item document that is following the presentation in the notebook.
Okay. Are there any questions from the floor? I'll let you guys go first.
I have a statement, a comment in terms of, got to take it off. In the approach versus the tax, the mileage rate, and the- In the approach versus the tax, the millage rate, and the projection of projected increase in overall costs. And you can see that in the twenty-two, twenty-three proposal that we are hitting negative numbers. And I recognize that this outpouring and we have no idea what our revenue and expenses are. But I think there's a better way that we can probably prepare for anything that we don't. And I see that we lowered, oh man, don't scare me like that.
You gotta speak into mic. They can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That we can start now and trying to ease the burden in the year twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two by increasing our millage rate and revenue. I, I just think it'd be nearsighted not to do that now. In the light of, we have no true definition of direction as to what our revenue streams are. But we can capture something by readjusting what we, our millage rate and, and ongoing downstream. It's easier to prepare a method to give it back rather than wait too late and can't collect any. So let's start in advance and try to prepare for the inconveniences that reopening our school and the unknowns in years to come. We now can do what we've been doing for years since I've been on this board is prepare for that uh, reserve fund. And, and let's not jeopardize that consistency that we have had and the approach that we have had over the years. I think it will be a serious mistake to not follow that format and gather the, and get the revenue that we can get. You can see our next door neighbor as to what they have done to that millage rate. And it's coming, we can't deny that it's not coming. It's just when we're gonna recognize it and, and, and put it forth so it won't be a burden going downstream. So I want my board members to keep that in mind as they go forward and, and, and make decisions on what we got here for a budget. Because it's, it's, it's just critical that we not let this slip from the method that we've been using before. Thank you.
Okay, I'll say something in response. So the first thing I wanna point, point out is that we really can't use our next door neighbors and here's why. They were grandfathered in to be able to go over the amount. So we cannot and nobody else can do that. Um, so that's like paint comparing apple to oranges. Rockdale has twenty, is it twenty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they were grandfathered in a long time ago. Um, so, and at this point, nobody can do that. Um, how many counties is it in the state that are over that amount?
Not, not many.
I think maybe five.
It's like seven?
Five or seven, something like that.
It's between five and seven. So I just wanna clarify that. The other thing is that when you talk about increasing a millage rate, that's to say that you would have the funds to come in. Um, because when you increase it, you're increasing it for the taxpayers. And unfortunately, in the wake of everything that's going on, people have lost jobs. People are not working. Um, people have reduced hours. Um, so even if you were to increase it, it does not necessarily mean those funds will come in if they cannot pay it. So that really doesn't make a lot of sense um, in regards to that. And I mean, we just kinda, I do understand watching um, what is being spent and, and stuff. I do like what you asked for earlier, the breakdown of the cost of actually reopening the schools. Um, cause I'd be curious to see that. Um, what is the actual cost? I mean, is it costing us more to reopen it than to, you know, do a virtual platform? Um, so I would like to, so I thought that was a great question. So I would like to see that breakdown. This does not have to be approved today. So if we could have that breakdown before the approval.
Excuse me, I'll comment. Ms. Baker, don't misrepresent what I said by putting in the fact that Rockdale was grandfathered in terms of their millage rate. You're misrepresenting the intent of what I said by trying to make that an argument to stick. That is not, please don't do that. You've already done it, but I, I, I'm sad that you would take the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Johnson, I didn't make it into an argument. I was simply stating the fact. You said, let's do what our neighbor did, but we can't do what our neighbor did because they were grandfathered in.
Excuse me, I made no reference to what was grandfathered. I made reference to the fact that we are not at our maximum and we reduced it. That's what I'm referring to. And let's keep it consistent.
To say it that way is to say it different than what you said before. So I'll take the second way and I understand what you're saying. But the first way you explained it, you said specifically, let's do what our neighbor did.
Increase the revenue. That's what they did. And that's what I'm saying do here. That's what we're talking about, revenue. Thank you.
Would anybody else like the floor?
I, I feel compelled to, sure.
Okay, Mr. Bailey.
I, I certainly hear Mr. Johnson's uh, concern for a, a red number in twenty-two, twenty-three. And I would, I would not want us to be in that situation. Uh, at the same time, the last four or five years that I've looked at these things, we, they've never been that accurate when we get to that point four years out, um, because there's so much happens in between. So we, we look at this and make decisions based on it. This was my same argument last year. We, if we're gonna use this uh, matrix to make decisions from, it's difficult when you see either a high ending fund balance four years out or a, you know, negative balance four years out. Uh, I would not wanna rush to increasing the, the revenue yet, uh, and only doing it when the, it, it's necessary. Now, I'm, I'm with you. I don't wanna wait and get behind the eight ball and then not be able to do it for sure. But we fought for years to get to a place where we could give some of the, the tax break back to the people. Uh, and I just, I'm not sure this is the year to, to increase it. Personally, I'm not sure this is the year to increase it. I would certainly not be in favor of that uh, this year, particularly with a, a six million dollar increase uh, or four million dollar increase in gross taxes. Is that right?
Yes.
Four million dollar increase.
Mm-hmm.
Even if we keep the millage rate the same, the paper is gonna read that we're increasing taxes, right? So um, I, I certainly wouldn't wanna legitimately then increase taxes again on top of that uh, when in fact, it, it, even with a ten percent reduction in state funds, it looks like we can, we can get through this year and the next year and the next year, okay? And that gives us three years to, to work on making sure that end, ending fund balance is where it needs to be. And as we move, as we learn and get better at the virtual classroom and all these other, we're gonna see all sorts of different costs go up and down. And um, I'm certainly not ready to make a decision today on a, on a, on a, a sheet that we use every year that we not even sure, and I'm not saying it's, it's wrong or inaccurate. I'm just saying it's, it doesn't, it hasn't been a, a tool that's been effective for us to make a decision on for a four-year uh, outlook.
Projection. It's just a projection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to give you an idea, if things are static moving forward, where, where we might be. And it's, it's just a warning, that's all.
Yeah, and it's a good, it's a good indicator dashboard to go do something before you get there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and we have a, a hearing, a special call meeting, excuse me, not a hearing, on the millage rate. But Mr. Bailey, you brought up a, a great point. And if you wanna educate the viewers on why it will read as an increase, um, to help them understand why it does, if you wanna take this opportunity.
Now we're in the actual millage rate meeting.
Go ahead and do it now, since you said that in your dialogue.
All right, sure.
Yeah, so while you have the audience captured, so they can understand.
Be glad to. So uh, our millage rate caps out at twenty mils. And last year, we were able to roll it back to nineteen point seven eight, is that right?
Yeah, seven eight eight.
Yeah, seven eight eight. Um, and that, that in a sense gives the taxpayer um, a break on their taxes. So if the uh, the twenty mils is the cap, we backed it down. Um, and then that number is multiplied by then whatever your, your property value is. So the value of your property, you know, that gross tax, and then you multiply it by the twenty mils or whatever you're gonna get when you take all the combined gross tax. I'm not gonna explain it real well, but the point is, we gave the taxpayers a break last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, and then so this year with property values going up, so most everyone's property value goes up. And if the millage rate doesn't change, then the nineteen point seven eight eight, then there, it looks like on their tax bill that their taxes went up. They, because they're actually paying more money this year than they did last year in taxes. However, we did not increase the millage rate. We left the millage rate the same.
Right.
We do have, Mr. Johnson is, is offering that option. We could increase the millage rate to make sure we had an abundance that we needed this year, next year, and the year after. Um, and I think the, the presentation, when we get there, and you've already made reference to it, is we're, we're not re- recommending increasing the millage rate. You guys are not recommending increasing the millage rate. So I don't know if that explained it.
That is, that's perfect. So because people home value went up, it's going to look like your taxes went up um, because you will be paying more. However, the millage rate is going to stay the same. So the only reason why you're paying more is because the value of your home went up. So because when there is an increase in that tax portion, you have to by law advertise it as a tax increase, even though technically the millage rate, we're not increasing it. And those home values are not assessed by us. So, so we don't do that part.
Yeah, but if someone were to sell their home right now, this year, with their higher property value, they're, they're the winner in that game, even though they had to pay a few more dollars in their tax.
Yes.
Their house is worth, their property's worth more and so therefore their value. They're, they're gonna win if they sell their home. We don't want them to sell their home, obviously. We want people to stay here and, and uh, be a part of this community and be a good citizen.
Madam Chair, yeah. Um, just, just to circle back around, when we made the decision to roll the, and the board made the decision to roll back the tax millage rate to seven, nineteen point seven eight eight, it was because we had a holiday quote unquote from paying state health insurance. And so because we are good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, we returned, those were unbudgeted funds that we did not know we would receive. And so rather than pulling them in and keeping them, we used those to reduce the millage rate from twenty to nineteen point seven eight eight. The calculation conversely, so with the new digest and looking at if you were to move it to twenty mils, it is almost the exact same reduc- the increase would be equivalent to the reduction even with the new digest number. So we sort of kinda looked at that just in case. So it would still be a roughly six hundred thousand, six hundred fifty thousand dollar um, increase if you were to move the ta- the millage rate to twenty mils. So just to put that in context and to remind people how we got there. Um, it was because we carefully consider all the, the revenue streams that we have. And when we had money that was unbudgeted, rather than put it in the budget, we just returned it to our taxpayers.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion from the floor?
Well, another comment, I, I can't help but resist that. I, 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 I got a nice lecture on budgeting. I appreciate that. But I wanna give one in kind, is that, again, I'm gonna try to reemphasize the fact that we can do a little bit of preventing here by maintaining or going back to the twenty millage rate. Because we know, I mean, they've estimated that we're going to incur a minimum of about a twenty percent budget increase for this coming year. And we don't know where we're gonna get it from yet, but most folks are saying that. And then just take a little bit of uh, preliminary thought on our part that we can avoid going in the hole, so to speak. And when it comes times to reward our well-deserving employees next year, that we won't be reluctant to showing our appreciation. Now's the time to prepare for those things that are coming. And if we don't do it now, when is the opportunity? That's what I'm saying. And we can preach, if you wanna use that word, as to what, uh, how the taxes gonna go up. Yeah, we did that and it's equated to about each taxpayer, about twelve dollars per taxpayer. And if you take that, and, and we got to understand when we take the, the public's funds, we are compounding those funds to serve a purpose. And, and I think the public understand that and appreciate that better than getting ten or twelve dollars back on their taxes. Because they are now going to want us to do something that we've had not to do in the past because of this epidemic. And we got to prepare for it and now is no better time. And let's not waste it. We can preach about it, we can lecture, but I'm talking about the fundamentals as to what we should do. And you got your philosophy all well and good, and that will buy nothing. We got to make the hard decisions going forward on this budget. And it has to do with the amount of funds that we raised through the millage rate, period. Thank you.
If I can, I, I just wanna say that, you know, you and I align on most everything in these meetings. Uh, this is the only one, I think, where you and I arm wrestle a little bit. And uh, I, I hope I'm not just waxing poetic over here and giving you philosophy. If anything, uh, prior to this COVID outbreak, I was prepared to come in here and ask for another reduction in the millage rate. Uh, but now seeing that I don't think that's a reasonable uh, solution, be, looking forward, knowing that we have increased expenses. So I agree with all the things you're saying. I think it's probably just a matter of timing for me. Um, to me, meeting in the middle is saying, well, maybe we don't move it this year. Uh, but are we, am I willing to look at it for the next couple of years to make sure we don't get that red? Absolutely, because we can't go into the red. That's a, a terrible thing to do. And I don't wanna get behind the eight ball either. So I'm saying I agree with you. It's just probably a matter of timing.
And timing is everything. Thank you.
Ms. Madam Chair, just for the record, um, we're not gonna get into the red. So we'll, we'll, we'll be work, working and watching and making adjustments and keeping you informed about the things that we'll do um, to protect us from getting into a situation where we have a red bottom line. But again, just to, it's just a cautionary tale, making sure everybody sees where, where we are and that we all need to be working together to ensure that we don't put ourselves in a position by making a decision that could impact that number. And so, just so our general public and our families and, and employees realize, you know, we, we recognize that we will be closely monitoring our budget. And, and this board in particular is probably one of the only boards in the state that does it more than one time a year, so.
Yeah, I was gonna add in that.
So ju- jump in, Madam Chair. I'll be quiet.
No, I was just gonna say, and the thing that we have to keep in mind, we actually look at our budget twice a year. So we look at it uh, usually before this time frame when the state needs it, but, but the state have um, delayed that. Um, but also we look at it again in December. So I think um, that's helpful in a sense with these projections. Um, it's less than five boards in the state of Georgia that look at their budget, school system wise, that look at their budget twice a year. So I think it's helpful that we look at it twice a year and can monitor it as we go along.
One last comment, if I can, just on this. Every year when we use this, when we get to this page, we have a lot of discussion. Um, and I'm, I just, I'll ask Superintendent, is, is this one sheet necessary for us to make good decisions on? Is this something, is this best practices across the state to have this page four years out like this? Or is this something that this team has come up with and we think this is a helpful tool? I'm not sure it's been a helpful tool is what I'm saying over the past few years. If anything, I think it creates a sense of we need to act and do something, whether it's lower the rate or increase the rate. And I'm not sure, um, I understand the point of it, but I'm not sure it's helpful because it's, it's just.
It's a projection.
It shakes out to not be accurate. And you even said, like, there are, for anybody who's watching online, there are red numbers on this sheet.
Absolutely.
And so I, I appreciate you saying, hey, we're not gonna go in the red. But according to this chart, we're going into the red.
Right.
And I don't think that's helpful is my point. And if it's not a helpful tool, I'm not sure we need to keep using it.
Yeah.
That's just a recommendation. I'm not making a motion of any sort. I just, I wonder if it's caused more confusion every year for us than, than helpful.
And, and lots of systems don't project out. They just, they live budget cycle to budget cycle. And so we, we implemented this many, many years ago and just have kept it in place um, and tried to be as closely fine tuning. But it's like reading the tea leaves. You really don't know what's gonna happen. You don't know what's gonna take place in terms of the, the economy, the legislature. We really don't know. So that's why we try to stabilize the expenditures and the, and the revenues moving, moving forward on the chart. And so if you don't find it helpful, we don't have to include it. Um, for, for me, it's a cautionary tale, whether it's a hundred percent correct or, or not. It, it says to me and to our team, keep your eye on fiscal year twenty-one so that we can be very cautious about decisions that we're making. And then let's see what it looks like at the end. But you're absolutely right. The further you get away from where we are today, the more um, the tea leaves we're reading. So, yeah, but if it's not helpful to you all, then we certainly can not include it in the presentation.
I'm one of.
Uh, that's what I'm saying to everybody on the board. If you, if you feel like it's, you know, doesn't help you any, then we don't have to have it. But I just don't want you to get surprised.
Yeah, an interesting exercise would be to go backwards and look at and see how, how accurate they've been over the past five or ten. over the past five or 10 years. I don't think they have been.
They've been off, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I'm wondering if it's even helpful.
Excuse me, I, I don't know if you're asking for a consensus here on the prediction format we use. I, I just don't see how you can manage it without knowing what's going to happen in the future. I mean, you, you, you can have eyes but be blind and can't see. And we can figure this out one year and don't understand what's going to happen the next year. I, I just don't see in today's financial world that we can't do without this. It, it's impossible. It's a cardinal sin, in my view, not to have this type of information.
Well, we'll just keep looking and refining.
Sure.
Yeah, and what I hear, and just to clarify, what I hear you saying, Mr. Bailey, is not that we don't need specifically this tool, that the problem or the flaw with it is that the accuracy is so off.
Yeah, it's the same problem I've had year after year with this thing. When you take the total expenditures, I'm, I'm sorry, when you take, what's the number just gets copied across?
It's the revenue.
The revenue, which we know is not going to be the same, but we copy it across. Or we project it with a, you know, real, real super conservative, whatever. And, and there's no way to know that, and that throws the rest of the numbers off. So like, say we had this thing for 10 years, it's just going to get redder, 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 the longer it goes, because that projected revenue number, there's no way to project that going across not even four years, much less five or 10 years. So I'm fine with having it as a tool. I just hate that we get bogged down on it every year when it doesn't feel like it's helped, it's been helpful.
Yeah, you want actual numbers.
Yeah, I, I think we do better with zero-based budgeting and you have actual, but that's maybe a philosophy, so.
Yeah, zero-based budgeting is hard in school systems.
I understand.
Yeah. We've actually looked at it a time or two, trying to figure out how to, how to make it work and.
Sorry to get bogged down there.
But Mr. Bailey, we'll, we'll take a look at it to see if there's anything that we can do to tighten it up a little bit. But you are correct, a lot, the further you get out, the harder it is to project and predict, especially in the volatile environments that we're in right now. So it's just, it's just a tale. Be careful, keep your eye on it, here's where we, here's where we are now. If we're not cautious, this is where we could be. We, we, we know we're not going to get there, but at the end of the day, if everything remained the way it is, then this is where we would land. So, and Mr. Johnson, you're correct, I feel very, for me, I like to at least have a look out there, and I think everybody on our team does, and we'll just work to try to tighten it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, any other concerns from the floor? Having none, any other matters of interest? Okay, if there is none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Before we adjourn, may, may I point us to the eSPOLOX tab? Sorry.
Okay, so we need to go back then. Go ahead.
Sorry, we, we got caught up, we got bogged down in the chart. But at any rate, we always put together an eSPOLOX budget so you can see how we expend our SPOLOX dollars. And it's just a simple document that projects the revenue that we will receive from eSPOLOX and then how those dollars will be expended. And Erica, you may want to just walk us through it very quickly there.
Actually, I think this, this is Dr. Barr's part.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Barr.
I was really trying to get through the meeting without saying anything. So it, it's, it's just a simple form. It estimates collections, projects collections for the next 12 months, the next fiscal year. It's got E-rate reimbursements that we anticipate during the fiscal year and total, total revenues there, $12 million, $411,000. Then you can follow that down to debt service, Eastside High School project, $3.4 million, and that's really for furniture and equipment for that facility. Technology, print management, school bus replacement, and that really covers the cost of the two school buses that we were, will likely receive bond funding for. And then the rest of that is E-rate projects, and that's $270,000. But when you look back up at revenue, that's the amount that we anticipate back for E-rate projects. And that is the FY '21 capital fund budget.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes.
So just to bring you back around to the debt service, to the debt service and the SPOLOX. If you recall, we do not have a debt service millage rate. Our debt service millage rate is zero. And that is because we elected as a community to put our debt into our SPOLOX payments, which then spreads that debt over everybody in our community rather than just property owners. And so you can see if, and this is all just if, if then, if then. The $8.1 million that we are, that we have in, in debt service would equate to approximately three additional mils in the debt service millage rate. So you're not, as a board, only protecting the taxpayers through the SPOLOX. You're also protecting the homeowners and property owners because you have the debt service in our SPOLOX. So that's just something that I think people need to understand and realize, that the board could, if they wished, levy a debt service millage rate on property owners. And we've had that before, and we rolled it all the way down to zero and transferred all debt to SPOLOX. And so that's why you see it there, and our taxpayers have received that reduction as well. And I just think it's worth pointing out for you as board members who make those decisions about how we, what we do with our dollars and how we expend our funds. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we adjourn, I did have a question. I didn't realize we were finished with the presentation, so. Just a question on FTE.
Yes.
With the season that we're going into, how is that, you don't have to give me the nuts and bolts, but it can't be calculated the same way it has in the past, right? Or are they going to, how are we going to, how are we going to get dollars from the state when they can't count behinds in a chair? How does that, what does that look like? Are they still going to get the same money?
We're, we're hopeful, and they're working on their, the state is working on the FTE collection information for us. But the things that they've released to us most recently, we will count virtual students. So they will be taught by our teachers, and they will count as though they are present in the room. Same for the students who are served in the self-paced in grade six through 12. Any student that is served by our school system will count in terms of FTE. The question is how many will return? And, and then from there, what those numbers look like compared to the 19,500 students we've served in the past. That might be where we see a decrease in FTE in terms of enrollment. But everybody who is served in our school system, whether in the classroom, present with a teacher, or virtually somewhere in the community, will count.
All right, so follow up then to that would be, that's going to happen across the state, not just in New York County.
Correct.
And if, and if the state has more funds and less students, are they going to, are they going to pro, that across all of the stu, do you have any idea? Are they going to give that to the systems, or are they going to withhold that money? Like, what are they, what's the state going to do with that?
Right.
Because if there's less students in the state, the funds are still there.
Right.
They're just not going to give them to the, to the.
No, well, and, and FTE runs about 18 months behind. So that there's a lag in, in the, in the counting. We count October and March and October. And so they take the average of those three, and that's the, the number that you get 18 months out. And so my, my guestimation is that what will happen is, I don't know that the whole state is going to see a significant decrease in the number of students. But if there is that decrease, then, then those funds are not sent to the, to the schools, and then it adjusts in your QBE formula. So if we have 19,500 students and suddenly we're serving 15,000, then that means that you've got to look at all the different parts of the puzzle because you will not receive the $19,500 fees that you would have with 15,000. But not until the next fiscal cycle.
18 months, so Mr. Johnson, that's something I'd be wanting to watch. You know, if our FTE is adjusted, and because we're Metro Atlanta and we're hit harder than other counties and, and our, you know, dollars coming from the state goes down, I would, I would want to be on top of that before we get four years out.
Well, Mr. Bailey, I didn't want to go through a dissertation, all the things that I considered when I mentioned my statement about the millage rate.
Right.
That was one of the factors that we don't control. But if we increase that millage rate, then we're over the hump when that hits us. That's, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm saying the millage rate is important, that we take advantage of it now.
I hear you.
I have a question, because in order for the students to be counted correctly, in order for us to receive the right funding, they have to be in the right class and they have to be coded correctly. So with everything that's going on, when do, and, and although that's going to be important for all schools, elementary, middle, and high, but I would like to know when's classroom schedules will be available, at least at the high school level? Because if a student is not coded in the correct class, and what I mean, like if they have an advanced placement class, or they have an advanced class versus a regular ed class, they need to be coded in the right class in order to get the right amount of funding. When would those schedules be available? Because if a student is choosing option two, say for example, it's going to be difficult to kind of correlate with someone to get their schedule together.
I think they're working on master schedules right now, if I'm not mistaken.
They're working on the master schedule, but it's for them being placed specifically until you, you know, get all of the information.
Back in.
Where they are, you know, they can't do it specifically, but they, the master schedules typically by now are probably built. You know, but, you know, we're at a hold, I'm waiting to see what the specifics are. But we've tried our best, to, to, we're trying our best to go to schools to make sure that whatever child would have been taking this year, that that child, you know, is, that we will still have those offerings. Now, depending on if they're going to do, if they're going to be self-paced, it may not be as clean of a match, so we're, we will work through that. But we won't know until we get the data in as to what the, to what each individual child selected as an option.
So something you said, I have another question now. When you say it may not be as clean as a match if they're self-paced. So then at the high school level, because most students are trying to complete a pathway when it comes to their special programs and stuff like that. So if it's not clean, what do you do about those students in their pathway?
We're not as worried about the core, like the academic courses. What I mean by may not be as clean, Edgenuity, you know, will not offer a dance class.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, like a pathway. So to complete the pathway, you got to take three classes in order. And it's got to be the same coded class. So you can't, so the dance class, which is a perfect example, because I have that issue now. So the dance class, which is, you can either do dance, or you can do modern dance. Two different classes, two different standards. So if a child starts off at dance one, their next class for the pathway should be dance two, not modern dance one, which is a completely different pathway.
Exactly.
So if you start them off in a different dance, they won't get the opportunity to complete that pathway.
So they are, you know, Dr. Warfield is working through those, what we call their, their singletons. And that was one of the things that I think the high school principals raised yesterday in their meeting with her, was how, how are we going to address the singletons? We're looking at a way to offer dance virtually, if, you know, if need be, if the child is not there. Because what happens is the state gives us, you know, the latitude to offer any of the state-approved courses. So we can, we can do that, and then they also give us the latitude in how we offer it. So it, it will, and it, and now just, let me just use dance as an example again.
That's great, because the Dance Association for the State, the Dance Education Association for the State actually released some information yesterday. So I mean, it's great that you use that.
And one of the things that we did this summer in the elementary camp, the camp at night, they, Katania Morrow, who teaches regularly at Port Adele, she taught the dance class for us, and she was able to teach it virtually. So it, it can be done, it's just a matter of, of, of making it work and getting it there.
So those students that choose option two, just for the coding purposes, and then they don't have their, their master schedule, or their schedule does not match up to a class that would complete their pathway, so that they'll be coded correctly and will get the right amount of funds for that student.
And they're in the right course.
And they're in the right course, that's when Edgenuity would come into place on the option two model?
If, if, yes, if it is a course that Edgenuity offers. If it's a course that Edgenuity does not off, now we're, we're pretty, we're, we're really good with the academic courses. It's the singleton courses or the, the, maybe some of the non-academic courses that there may not be a course that's offered there. So we're, we're working with the schools and the teachers to try to get those children serviced as well.
Okay, just want to make sure kids are in the right classes and is coded correctly for payment, thank you.
But, but we usually know that in advance so that we can do the right thing so we won't be penalized, am I correct?
Exactly, by now the schedules are built. I mean, the kid, you know, they, they, the schedules are typically built by now, even at elementary. And if not, they would be pretty close. But now, so that's in there, it's just a matter now of just making that, marrying that with whatever the options are. So they're going to have, there're going to be some tweaks, obviously, based on, on, on the choices that they make as it relates to the option. But, um, but yeah, by now we would, yeah, the schedules would already be built, are pretty close to being finished as it relates to being built.
One, one other comment, not on a different, back on eSPOLOX. Mr. Barr, certainly would be nice if we had a capture of what we have done thus far in the current year's eSPOLOX as to those expenditures.
I'll send it to you, I have it already prepared and everything. So I share that in the community all the time about, from east, from SPOLOX one all the way to now, all the things that we've done, so I'll be able to send it.
I would like to, an explanation along associated with it.
It has one. Do you know, so it'll say like SPOLOX one, addition to Alcoa High School. This was the total, and that's what we did. SPOLOX two, we built veterans. And then that, it'll say built construction, constructed veterans, and then the total that's associated with it. Is that what you're asking for?
Let me see it first.
Any others, I guess I should ask it this way, because I asked earlier, do we have any, anybody else from the floor, and nobody said anything? So let me ask it this way, are there any other presentations? Okay. Other matters of interest? Okay. Having none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Kate, is there a second? Kate, it's been moved and second, all in favor?